Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, June 22, 2022. Do you have anything to report out?
Madam Mayor, nothing to report out, a closed session.
Okay, then we will convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for June 22, 2022. If the court will call the roll, please.
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if you guys will all join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any agenda update?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay. We do have one request to speak in business from the floor, but Loretta, is this actually about the survey that the city sent out, which is actually item two? Can we save it for item two, then? Okay. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak at business from the floor? That's your opportunity to speak about anything that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, understanding that we may not have a discussion with you about it.
Madam Mayor, you do have one request to speak from an online caller.
Okay.
Actually, we have two now.
Okay.
So first hand up, I believe, was Scott Rafferty. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and talk, I'll set the three-minute timer once you start, and we'll give you a 30-second warning.
Thank you. Well, your attorneys attempt to get a federal court to dismiss the state law claim against the city's election method failed rather spectacularly this afternoon. So we will be back in court, and there will be district elections this fall. We have one person to thank for that, that's the mayor, because two years ago, when two distinguished African-Americans were being considered for council, the mayor said, "We've already had a black person," referring to the mayor, fire mayor, who had been arrested for prostitution and cocaine distribution, as if that experience was somehow relevant to Folsom and what it aspires to be today. That's why we've had this proceeding, and that's why you are where you are. And it was sad at the time that members Kozlowski and Aquino just couldn't stand up for their convictions. But now, we will have a more equitably elected council. I hope that we can settle this. We're going to have a discussion with your lawyers on Thursday. But just to set your expectations, no council that has overstayed the safe harbor has ever drawn its own map. But let's assume that you can. There will be an extra penalty. There has been for every single council that has not complied with a safe harbor. So I'd like to read just a few sentences of the opinion regarding Palmdale. The current members of Palmdale City Council were elected to an unlawful election. The citizens are entitled to have a council that truly represents all members. More importantly, the Latino and African-American citizens deserve to have their voices heard in the operation of their city. This can only be accomplished if all members of the city council are lawfully elected. To permit some members of the council to remain who obtained their office through an unlawful election will not remedy the clear violation. Therefore, the court finds that in order to tailor an appropriate remedy to address the violation, the special district-based election is to be held for all four districts. That's what we'll be seeking in Superior Court now that we are back in state court. All of you need to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, your next speaker from the conference line will be Jason Davis. Jason, go ahead and unmute yourself, and when you're ready to start, go ahead. I'll start the three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Good evening. Today, I sent all of you via email public records that I recently requested from the city. Those records were, the first one was regarding the Folsom Navigator, and they were provided through the police department, and I totally appreciate all the data that was given. It was regarding fiscal year 2021 and 2022 expenses the city has paid for that position, and all expense details and daily logs that the person has been doing in that position. I'd requested the same information regarding animal control services. On the Navigator side, it's really disappointing that the Navigator does not keep daily statistics. I was told last year by the police department that they did keep daily statistics, and that's absolutely not the case. The Navigator position, it's a real important position to our unhoused residences. We should be getting everything we can out of this position. That position costs about a little over $60,000 a year, and unfortunately, I personally feel like we're not getting what we should be getting through that position. I don't know how it's possible to measure success without the person in this role documenting what they do on a daily basis. Hopefully, you guys are able to, you know, help and do something about this. I will say, on the animal control services side, the logs are amazing, and I would highly recommend, as you guys look through the documents that I have sent, I've also sent those to Elaine, as well as Chief Hillman. And that's, those are my comments. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, at this time, we have no further requests to speak, but I want to give one more chance if anybody on the line wants to raise their hand to I'm not seeing any requests.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to scheduled presentations. The first one is proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month. And I've asked the vice mayor Rodriguez to present that one. And I believe Lorraine is going to be meeting her down front. Looks like Samantha Davidson. This was the part, Rosary, we were supposed to say who was supposed to come down.
All right. Is this working, Rosary? No? It might need to be turned on. Okay. And then we also have Brad Nelson, Park Planner, and Cindy Fradlin. And where's Cindy? And Cindy, and I understand, Cindy, that you are retiring after 14 years with the city of Folsom. Congratulations.
So I've been reading this proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the city of Folsom. Whereas park and recreation are vitally important in providing physical and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed activities, play, and fitness. And whereas Parks and Rec provides numerous outdoor opportunities in our parks, trails, open space, and facilities in all skill levels and interests. And Parks and Rec supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' participation and engagement. And Parks and Rec fosters social cohesiveness in communities by providing space for all individuals to come together peacefully and ensuring all have access to park and recreational benefits. And park and recreation support human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in all people of all ages and abilities. And park and recreation sustains and preserves our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature through our extensive trail network, and promoting the ecological awareness and sustainability. And Parks and Rec creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers, and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events that make life better. And now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Carrie Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, do proclaim July 2022 as Park Make Life Better Month, proclaimed on this 28th of June 2022.
Oh, you kind of what you wanted to talk first. Lorraine Pajani, your Parks and Rec director, thank you so much. I wanted to say first thanks to our city council for all the support you've given us for Parks and Rec, and also to our Parks and Rec Commission, who has been a great resource to us, especially lately. They've really helped us navigate some challenging and new issues, especially out of the pandemic and some of our new recession-era topics. So I would like to thank Samantha, who is here on behalf of our Parks and Rec Commission, and all of the commission tonight. So, and thanks to the public, too, for the opportunity that you give us to serve the community, serve our residents. And certainly, we have Community Service Day coming up, so we're looking forward to really having a great day and a great impact in our community. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and our next item is schedule presentation number two, presentation of the city's survey results and direction to staff. Loretta, do you want to come up and ask your question or make your comment first, and then we'll see if Elaine can address it?
Loretta Hettinger, longtime city resident and very involved in the historic district, as you all know. I'm sure that you're going to get a lot of very good information from this survey. Obviously, I've not seen the results of it, but from looking at the survey, I would ask you not to place all of your emphasis on the survey results. And the reason I say that is that the survey appears to me to be largely based on the existing budget and not on the general plan goals and policies, and not on current issues. So the city is going to need to put resources into the issues in the community. One of them, of course, in the historic district, the whole parking issue, and another, the homeless issue. And this survey was largely focused on how the money is currently being spent, and so I would urge you to be sure that in looking at these results, that you keep in mind the 19 goals of the general plan, which are not represented fully here. Thank you.
Appreciate that feedback, Loretta. Thank you. This is just one tool of many. All right, Mayor, as the council knows, you've been engaged in a strategic planning process this calendar year, which began with a deep dive into the significant budget gap we're facing in future years, including the strong possibility of impending recession layered on top of that. We then continued with a discussion with the council as to where you'd like to see Folsom in future years, and each council member also weighed in on our city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. As a next step, we sought direction from you as the city council to then reach out to our residents in a community engagement process, which included conducting statistically valid polling and also pushing out a community survey. I am very pleased to report that we had a huge response to our community engagement outreach effort, and I think you'll hear from our consultants, an astonishing response compared to other jurisdictions. And I'm deeply appreciative of all the residents who took the time to so thoughtfully weigh in. Just as we asked you as the council, we asked our residents via survey what they would like to see most for Folsom in the future. We also asked them to rank city services in terms of their value to them. During this process, we did let our community know that we have been discussing proposing a modest increase to our sales tax rate, but that absolutely no decisions have been made by this council, and we want to hear from our community. As you may know, many of our neighboring cities have approved local sales tax measures in recent years, but Folsom's rate has not been raised and remains at the minimum 7.25 percent, plus 0.5 for Measure A transportation tax. Just a reminder that if you consider a dollar purchase, we as a city do not get 7.75 cents despite that 7.75 rate. Our portion of that is actually just one cent. If the voters were to approve a local sales tax measure, however, the entirety of that portion would go to us, so voters would be directly funding their own city for their own services. If voters approved an additional half cent, the sales tax revenue received by the city annually would increase by $11 million each year. A full cent increase would yield close to $22 million annually. Traditional estimates show that 40 percent of sales tax is actually paid by non-residents. By way of comparison, Roseville already has a half cent increase, Rancho has a full cent, Sacramento has a full cent, Davis has a full cent, West Sacramento has a full cent. As I've communicated to you many times, as has our CFO, Stacey Tumani, our general fund is struggling to keep up with basic needs. It would not be exaggeration to say that nearly every general fund department is currently understaffed and under-resourced, including our police and fire departments. We also have a long list of unmet maintenance needs. Further, we are unable to set money aside for big-ticket items in the future, including IT infrastructure and facility improvements. Expectations in this city are rightfully extremely high, and we are extremely financially constrained. Tonight, I'd like you to hear directly from our consultants who directed this outreach. First, you'll hear from Brian Godby from Godby Research, who will be sharing the polling results from March. Brian is on the phone with us this evening. After Brian's presentation, you'll hear from Bonnie Moss with Clifford Moss, who will share the major themes that emerged from responses to the community survey. Bonnie is here with us in the chamber tonight. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Godby. And Brian, I've asked Christine Brainer to run your slides tonight, so just indicate next slide whenever you're ready. Brian?
Sure. Thank you very much, Elaine. Council members, I'm pleased to be presenting this data to you this evening. Christine, if we could go to the second slide? Okay, so should the, everybody should be looking at overview and research objectives. The city manager alluded to some of this information. We looked at a variety of different things in the quantitative survey. We looked at overall quality of life, city services, management of taxpayer funds. There were questions about the coronavirus crisis, and the direction of the economy. We, of course, looked at potential support for a hypothetical sales tax measure. We drilled down into various things that we might spend the money on to see what the response priorities were. There were informational statements, positives and negatives, and then we looked at duration and rate information, as well as preferred sources of information. There's also a wealth of demographic information that supports all of this primarily to make sure that the sample is representative of the universes that we're looking at. Next slide, three, please. Slide three, please.
We're on it.
We're on it.
Okay, all right. The video's a little behind, sorry. So this shows you the methodology, and basically, the data collection was online and on the phone. Of course, online doesn't mean we just placed a link on your social media pages. It means that we identified likely November 24 voters as part of the universe and a subset of likely November 22 voters, and then we sent specific invitations to each of those people that were in our sample. So it's not just the world on Facebook taking the survey. We were in the field from March 16 through March 24. The average phone survey is 25 minutes long. That's still our metric for measuring length. The sample size was 778 completed November 24 universe, and then within that, 450 likely November 22 universe. The November 22 is a smaller turnout, so it's a subset of the larger presidential 24 election. The margin of error, then, for that larger 24 election is 3.5 percent, plus or minus, and plus or minus 4.5, 4.6, depending on how you round, for the 22 universe. Next slide, actually, and we'll skip the key findings and go on to page five. So here, this is that beginning section that I described earlier. It's really kind of background information about the city. The first question was, are you satisfied with the quality of life? And here, if you add the very satisfied and somewhat satisfied together, you can see we're at 89 percent satisfied, which is a great place to be. Very few cities now are even out of the high 70s, and almost none are in the 90s, so this is a great, really a great place to be. The ratio of satisfied to dissatisfied is almost eight to one, which underscores that same point. Slide six, please. This next slide is how is the city doing addressing the COVID crisis, and it's a favorable-unfavorable question. And again, if you add the variance somewhat together, you see where it's 72 percent favorable versus 13 percent unfavorable. It's almost a six-to-one positive-to-negative ratio. That two is very high. Since we've been asking this question, starting really in April of 2000, we've seen this as low as 35 and as high as 83. So clearly, you're to the high end of that range, and that's also very positive. Next slide, number seven, So this is the direction on the economy in the next six to eight months, remembering that we were in the field in March. So the idea was to look to the fall, and you can see that 23 percent think the economy will be better, 22 percent think it'll be about, or 27, sorry, think it'll be about the same, and 42 percent think it will be worse. That probably when we did this survey was one of the worst-worsts, but now we have seen this as high as 62 percent worse. And it has gotten progressively more pessimistic as the months have proceeded with other cities and other counties and school districts that we've done surveys in. Obviously, you know, that's not a one-to-one ratio with Folsom. Slide eight, please. This next slide is satisfaction with the city's services. So again, adding the variance somewhat together, you see you're at 86 percent satisfied versus 12 percent in round numbers dissatisfied, the 0.4, almost seven and a half to one ratio. That also is excellent. I haven't seen, well, I've only seen one other city in this area in the last five months. So people are really happy with the quality of life and the services that they get in Folsom. Slide nine, please. This next slide is similar in terms of satisfaction. It's the ranking, but we're talking about the city's management of public funds here. Again, adding the variance somewhat together, you see where it's 64 percent. This always goes down from overall services, and the reason it goes down is because there's a bigger chunk of people who say, "Don't know." And they're just being honest with you. They don't follow your budget as closely as some might. So we're at 64 satisfied, 21 dissatisfied. It's a ratio of three to one. That's the highest satisfied I've seen this year. So that two is a really, really good number. People think you're doing a very good job with their money. We can move to slide 10, please. So this is where we switch gears, and we start talking about the sales tax measure, the hypothetical measure that we are testing. The wording is in the box on the right-hand side of the slide. It conforms to state law, which means that it can't be more than 75 words. It must have a rate, and here, it's one cent, sales tax. It has to show how much it raises per year. That's $22 million, and it has to have a term, and in this particular context, it's until ended by voters, which is a term that has been vetted in litigation around the state. The rest of the words are essentially yours to work with. This is a general-purpose measure, so that means that we can say, "We're going to spend it on things such as," which legally means that we could spend it on these items, but it is at the council's discretion ultimately. But these are the preferences. So when we were working on the survey with staff, these were the things that we thought would be the most interesting to voters, and we'll see their specific priorities in a moment, but we didn't know that in advance. So this is our best estimate based on our experience with previous cities, and as the city manager mentioned, some of your other local cities have done this. We actually worked in Rancho Cordova, and we worked in Roseville. So those are examples of similar cities where we did the same sort of methodology. The way to look at this is we've got two bars. One is the November 24 universe. That's that larger entire population that we sampled. And then November 20 is a subset of that, 22, sorry. And obviously, those are different types of turnout, and as a result, we also see there's slightly different, but not statistically significant, level of support. And the way we judge feasibility of a measure is we add the definitely yes, which is the green box, together with the goldenrod yellowish box, which is probably yes, and that's where you see for 24, we were at 60 percent in round numbers, and for 22, we're at 57 percent. Both exceed the margin of error that we talked about earlier, respectively. And it's a good place to start for a simple majority general-purpose sales tax measure. Next slide, this will be slide 11, please. So this slide, and it's actually two slides. It's a long list of items that we might spend the money on. And basically, what happened in the survey is we presented these all in a random order, and then we asked for each one of them, would you be much more likely, somewhat more likely, somewhat less likely, or much less likely to support the measure based on the money being spent on that particular item, or at least some of the money. We then go back when we're done with the interviewing, and we assign you American values that you see across the bottom of the slide, 2, 1, 0, -1, -2, and we create this intensity scale that you see associated with the bars in the chart. And it's a really good way to rank these items vis-à-vis each other, because it takes all the response categories into account at one time, but it's also pretty abstract. So we then, once we've ranked the items, we go back, and we look at the percentages, much more likely and somewhat more likely, and we add those together, and that's what you see represented by the range with the blue arrow. So we also group them into statistical groupings that are basically tied with, given the margin of error, and that's what you see as tier one. In tier one, we have at the top, maintain 911, emergency firefighter, and paramedic response times. It's 0.86 on our scale, but when we add the much more and somewhat more likely together, we're at 64 percent, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. Next is improve and maintain city parks, at just a teeny bit below. Then third, reduce impacts of drought by recycling water for the city parks, medians, and landscaping. Fourth is repair potholes and city streets. Fifth is maintain police crime suppression and investigation units. Next is maintain neighborhood police patrol, then improve fire protection, and then enhance wildfire protection. All of those items in the top tier are certainly above the simple majority threshold. They range as high as 64 and as low as 59, and so those are clearly the voters' priorities. The next tier is where we start with maintain and improve sidewalks, trade agents, street medians, slightly different spin on public works, but the wording matters, and you can see that that's only 58 percent, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. And we go down from there. While they're all positive, for sure, and that's a good thing, they're not necessarily getting us a lot of support vis-à-vis that hypothetical sales tax measure. And if we can continue on to slide 12, you'll see that the second tier continues, and here, we're at 54, and then we go down to 47 percent. It's still, again, rated positively, but you know, these things are clearly not driving support above the simple majority threshold, which is not to say that they're not important. They're just not, relatively speaking, as important as those first items. Next slide, number 13, please. So this is a series of informational items. That includes accountability measures. It includes things that are a little more positive factually, speaking, and are factual. And we do the same thing. The only difference is there, the scale is different. It's just much more likely, somewhat more likely, no effect, so it's 2, 1, 0. There's no negative side to the equation. It all works the same way, but you can't compare the scores here with the scores in the previous slides, but you can compare the percentages that we've added together on the far-right-hand side. So all of this first slide is tier one, and at the top, we have required citizens oversight committee. That's something that's almost always part of this kind of measure and is really important to voters almost everywhere. The measure will continue to give local control to Folsom over local needs, and what is behind the ellipses is that no funds can be taken by the state. And that too is almost always a critical accountability component. Essential purchases like groceries and prescription medicine are exempt from the tax. That's obviously important information, factually true, but helps people understand what this does and doesn't do. For victims of heart attacks, strokes, accidents, other emergency seconds can be the difference. And this measure would help ensure that response. Obviously, that's a little more of an explanation of what would be done with the money. Measure is needed to maintain current levels of police service, including neighborhood police patrols. Then the measure will help maintain streets and repair potholes on more than 403 miles of streets. Well-maintained streets, roads, parks, libraries, and rec facilities help protect our property values. The measure will maintain fire protection throughout Folsom. And visitors and shoppers from other communities will help pay their fair share so residents don't shoulder the entire burden. Again, if we look at the range on the right-hand side, you see there is high as 60% in round numbers and down to 56, again, above the simple majority threshold and important pieces of information. If we could go to the next slide, which is number 14. We can see the continuation of this list. Again, it was a long list presented in a random order, but we're looking at the priorities from the voters' perspective. And the remainder here is in tier one statistically. But now the items are starting to approach the simple majority threshold. And then when we get into tier two, we're right at the simple majority and then actually go below it. Again, they're still net positive, but there's some larger and larger no effects is what's going on. So next slide, please. This would be slide 15. And this is the critical statements. This is much the same methodology as the informational statements. But these things are statements that the opponents might make about the measure. The methodology, again, is largely the same. We don't put a minus sign in front of them to make them seem bad. So the higher they are, the more negative they are for the particular measure that we're talking about. So at the top of this list, we have funds from this measure can be spent for any purpose and there are no rules limiting spending. Say no to this blank check. And that's basically the argument against a general purpose tax measure because that's actually true. You can't commit to spending it on any one thing or any set of things because if you did that, it would become a special tax, which would require two-thirds. But this argument, again, is very effective. It's 60% at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. And obviously, that's significant. Next is the county is considering another sales tax increase at the same time. Obviously, we're referring to the transportation measure. And that's just a little bit below the top item, but still pretty impactful. And then finally, in tier one, if the city cuts the waste from the budget and stops new development, it'd have more than enough money for city services. That's a little bit lower at 55%. At least somewhat more likely to vote no. But still above the simple majority threshold necessary to defeat a measure. From there, we go into tier two. And while we're still at that low 50% number with the measure will increase Folsom's sales tax to one of the highest rates in the county. But from there, we start going down. And we do drop below the simple majority threshold necessary to defeat a measure. The next item there you can see is COVID-19 and escalating inflation on groceries, gas, household necessities. Now's not the right time. You know, that's an impactful measure. Obviously, it speaks to the economic climate that we're in currently. And we go down from there with some typical anti-tax arguments that you see in these kinds of efforts. Okay, if we could move to slide 16. So after we've presented both what we'd spend the money on and we presented the informational items, which are largely positive, we presented the negatives. And the negatives and the positives were rotated. So half of the respondents got one set first, half of the other, half of the respondents got the other set first. And that mimics what happens in the real world because you can never predict who's going to read what first or last. So we rotate those items internally. But then we come back to our ballot question a second time, now that people know a lot more about it. And we ask the exact same wording again. And as you can see here, for the November 24 universe, we started it at 60% in round numbers. And we're down a little bit. It's at 54% in round numbers. And the same thing is true for the November 22. We started at 57, we're down to 53. And when we wrote the survey, we didn't know where we were going to wind up. So if we go to slide 17, this is what we call a fallback. So we've been talking about a one-cent tax. And what we're looking to see at this point in the survey is, is there any price sensitivity in that tax rate? And so essentially, we say instead of one cent, what if it were a half cent? And you can see the 24 election jumps back up to the 59.5% that we started with. And you see the November 22 jumps up as well. And for this kind of question, those are both pretty important increases, which suggests to us that there is some price sensitivity in a sales tax measure such as this. Moving on to slide 18, then. This is a similar kind of analysis. You'll remember that our initial and our informed ballot test referenced the measure was until ended by voters. So we did another fallback, which is again, the same thing as it is at the rate level. Instead of intended, until ended by voters, what if it was ended after 10 years? And you see, something that we see routinely is that the duration, a shorter 10-year duration doesn't have that much impact versus until ended by voters. Certainly not as much impact as the rate does, for sure. And we see this routinely because the until ended by voters, which has been vetted in courts, appears to give the voters a more control over it rather than setting it down for a specific duration that they'd have to live with. And if we could go to the final slide, number 19. So this is just a final follow-up, not so much related to the hypothetical measure we've been talking about, but just what's your preferred sources of information? And as you can see here, the CDE newsletter gets 26%, 27% in round numbers. And then we drop way down to Folsom City News and Activity Guide at 11. And then we go under 10% postal mail, flyers, newsletters, et cetera, in a more generic sense. Facebook is at 9%. Email at LERTS at 9 in round numbers. Mailings from city departments at 6%. The website at 5%. And from there, you know, we're basically within the margin of error. So any of those could be basically zero. But it does give you an idea that people really do like your e-newsletter. So that is the slides that we have for this evening. I think in summary, we would say that a half-cent measure for 2022 is feasible. It does have an uphill or a steeper runway, if you will, than 24. Obviously, 24 is two and a half years away. So there's more time than for 22. But in either case, if the council were to decide to put this on the ballot, there would really need to be an independent effort organized, not by the city. Obviously, you can't do that. But a group of citizens could come together and support this measure. And that would be really critical to it being on the ballot should the council decide to do that.
Thank you, Brian. This is Elaine. And just before I open it up to the council for questions, could I ask you to comment on kind of what the geopolitical, you know, economic climate we were in when we were polling that week in March and what it's looking like today and how people feel about revenue measures fast forward to June of 22?
Yeah, that's a great question, Elaine. When we were in the field, it was mid-March. So we were already in, war in Ukraine had already started and gas prices had started their precipitous climb. Obviously, gas prices had been climbing as a result of COVID through the late fall last year. So they were already up. But then they went up even higher. And I think that's reflected in that question we asked about your opinion on the economy and why we had the 42% saying it's worse. Those are, 42% worse is, well, it's not as bad as I've seen since then. It's still not good, obviously. And people are impacted by the inflation caused by gas prices, for sure. And I've just seen it get worse. Again, they're not cities that are identical to Folsom. So you can't exactly compare. But the trend is very, very clear that people are very concerned about inflation, the high price of gas, high price of groceries, and it hasn't gotten any better.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. And I'd like to, you know, take a pause here before we move on to Bonnie Moss's part of the presentation. If the council has any questions specifically about the polling for Mr. Godby?
I have a couple of questions. Of the 778 individuals that were, that completed the survey, those are actual completed surveys, correct?
That's right, yes.
So how many, do you have the number of how many people started the survey that didn't complete it? Because some of the feedback I had heard was, because it's a 25-minute survey, they got into it and then 10 minutes later, they said, I just stopped because it was too long.
That certainly happens all the time. And 25-minute survey is certainly at the outside. We don't like to do anything longer than that, but we are successful in completing it. And the way we address that challenge of people terminating, we call it a mid-survey term, is the sample is stratified demographically on the front end. So we know how many people are Republicans that are 40 to 49 years old, for example, that live in the northern part of the city, just to summarize. We have a lot more demographics than that in our stratification, but that's an easy example. And so we know what percentage that should be in the final mix. So when somebody terminates, they are replaced by somebody else who matches those same demographics. So it's random within strata rather than random within the entire population, which gives you a much better margin of error and helps solve the non-response problem that you're talking about, which is endemic in surveys. When I started doing this 35 years ago, our response rates were night and day differently than we are now. So that strategy has become essential to doing a good survey.
Thank you.
I have a question. So if a city, you know, does a survey with you and then they go ahead and put a measure on the ballot, when you look at the actual election results compared to the survey results, do the favorable numbers tend to go down, up, or about the same when you go from the survey to the actual election results? I'm guessing they go down.
Yeah, we have, of the measures that we have recommended be on the ballot, and it's literally hundreds worth nearly $50 billion now total over the last 30-plus years. We have, for 93% of the measures we've recommended be on the ballot, we've been within the margin of error. But it's almost always on the low side. So I wouldn't expect the margin of error to go up. So if we look at that final, or at the half-cent test for November, we were at 58% for 22. We've got a margin of error of plus or minus 5% in round numbers. So I wouldn't expect that to be 73, or I'm sorry, 63 in any instance. It's more likely to be 55 or 54 and a half or something like that. So it is, it's almost always on the downside. And that's even when we do our job and that independent group comes together to support this after the council makes the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, this is YK. I think I'm just going to follow up what Elaine asked, just for clarification. Taking at the current inflation and gas prices, I think you mentioned the results are going to be slightly different with the more negative side, not? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the gas prices have continued to go up. They obviously plateaued a little bit last week and the week before, and even came down a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, anybody knows, and we're all trying to predict the fall. We've asked what the voters think, and that's what we have in the survey. But if we try to use our crystal balls instead, you know, we'll see that there may be a federal gas hiatus, gas tax hiatus. There may be, there may be some sort of stimulus. There's obviously a state stimulus coming. So, you know, all of those are designed to help solve the price of gas problem. But we don't know how much, whether that, you know, it certainly should be positive. But we don't know how much that'll really impact it.
Right, yeah, thank you. And my last comment, this is not the question. Christine, if you don't mind to go to slide 19, I just want to make the comment to our communications director, who is helping here. E-newsletter has been very popular. We have about less than 9,000 subscribers. And look at the Facebook. We have 35,000 subscribers in Folsom Chat. I'm just going to make that comment. So maybe spending a little bit more strategic way of getting more subscriptions to E-newsletter, some creative way? You know, this is already demonstrating citizens are sincerely reading. Our nice E-newsletters are coming every Monday morning. I just want to make that comment and thanks to Christine.
I don't know that anybody said the Facebook stuff is coming from Folsom Chat. I would think it's coming from the city's Facebook page.
I think it is because it kept coming up as a sponsored ad with my page. It was coming from the City of Folsom page.
City of Folsom, okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Godby before we move on? Okay, I'd now like to turn it over to Bonnie Moss with Clifford Moss Consulting, who's been helping us on the survey side of the world and the community engagement. So she can share some of the primary themes we heard from that process.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. It's good to be here. My name is Bonnie Moss. And my firm, Clifford Moss, is a strategic communications firm. We work at the local level. So 100% of our work is with local projects and local initiatives. We work in the pre-electoral space. We work in the election space. And we work in the non-electoral strategic communication space. And the primary focus of our work is with public sector agencies. So we're working with cities, school districts, community colleges, counties, public healthcare districts, and so forth. And I just want to provide that background to you so that you know, as we're talking about the community side of this, where we're coming from. And I personally have been doing this work for about 35 years and the tax election piece of it for 23 years. So let's get started. We wanted to be respectful of the voter opinion work that Godby Research was doing, but we also didn't want to stop there. We wanted to make sure that we invited the voices of your community to actually weigh in as well. So that was the goal of our work. And we do have a very deliberate and intentional public engagement model that we use. We are very driven by both the art and the science of this work. We know that when you really look at success, whether it is a public plan that a public agency is building or an initiative or a ballot measure, whatever it is, what we have found is to start with the story, your unique story. And from that, what is your plan for the future? What is your story of need? What is your plan? And then understanding who votes, who participates in that community conversation. And then looking at resources, time, money, people. So we're very intentional as we look at that process. And we were here as well. We followed the public opinion survey that was with voters. And I will say that we took the community survey down on Friday, the online survey that people could go to and provide input on. That was on Friday. And even today, I got an update from your team that said 15 more response cards had come in. So I'll talk about that in a moment. But I just wanted to let you know that we try to be very deliberate in our process. And we're also looking for the sweet spot, the intersection of interests, if you will. between what you know you need and what your community of residents and voters tell us matters to them. So, we're paying attention to that piece as well. And we're also paying attention to a tried-and-true belief system that we've seen play out successfully over and over again, which is that people support what they help create. People support what they help create. So, the investment in asking people, "What do you think?", the investment in asking people to think about it and weigh in is part of the runway to get to a successful place where you get that sweet spot in the end. So, we practice that as well, and we have a lot of tools in our toolkit. And here in Folsom, I have to tell you, I was really excited to see what was happening in Folsom because it was an outlier to the positive. Phenomenal results in terms of people weighing in when we simply asked them. So, we use direct mail, I'm going to talk about that. We use what we call two-way communication, where we tell that story of need in simplest terms, and we ask people to weigh in, "What do you think?", and we remind them that we have not made any decisions yet. We want to get people's input first. And then, we also use digital. So, first of all, we did what we call our two-way mailer, and I'm sure you all saw this. This went out to almost twenty-nine thousand households, both residents and voters. That is an extra step, a more broad step that you took that many other cities don't go that far, but essentially, this went out to every household. So, big participation there. We also conducted digital and online reminders and invitations to weigh in. Please take the survey, please weigh in. And those went out broadly only in the Folsom community. We also sent an e-blast out to forty-three thousand email addresses. And I will also say, which we did not have listed here, but the newsletter, the city newsletter, when we saw the results from the public opinion survey, we said, "We want to be in that newsletter because clearly, your community really values that." And so, here are the numbers. What I want to tell you is the participation level was off the charts. Folsom is now taking the record, and we work all over the state. Normally, we would see a maybe one percent response rate. Here, the response rate, and I'm using the mailer as the primary, was sixteen point five percent, so like fifteen times higher, higher than we normally see. And what we saw in those results, and we're still really analyzing the comments, we got over twelve hundred comments from your community members. They took the invitation seriously, they ranked items, they weighed in with comments, and these phenomenal response rates tell me that this community of residents really cares about their community. They care enough to weigh in. So, let me share some of the primary themes. First of all, public safety came in clearly and compellingly at the top. And the pie chart you see is the response rate for those members of the community who ranked public safety first. You can see seventy-four percent. So, very, very high ratings for public safety. And that was maintain nine-one-one, emergency medical fire response times, crime prevention, neighborhood police patrols. Lots of comments about public safety. Here are some. These are representative. So, we saw lots of things from "Keep up the good work", "We love our police department", "Let's do more on traffic control" or "Traffic enforcement", so forth. Lots of comments on public safety. Second was wildfire protection. Interesting that that came clearly into second place. Implement wildfire prevention strategies and provide fire protection services. This was a clear and compelling number-two priority from residents in the community. And here we see, "I love our FPD, fire sensors should be installed in the parkways." So, what's really interesting, that we want to go deeper on looking at the twelve hundred comments, is that you had a variety of comments, from people complimenting the city to people saying, "We need to do more over here" or "Do more over there", lots of variety on what they're saying. And so, we are digging deeper into that feedback. And then, in the third-place slot was really a cluster of interest, street repairs, parks and trails, and disaster preparedness coming in sort of in a much closer set of numbers than the first two, which came in much higher, and others that may have come in a little bit lower. And here again, people had a variety of comments. You know, we can see Folsom is a beautiful city, keep it well-maintained. I'm concerned about where our water will come from, et cetera, et cetera. People really commenting on a variety of elements here. And essentially, we really saw that opinions are abundant, which is not surprising. You see that, and we want to dig deeper to really find out what does that mean. And of course, you may be, I'm sure you're aware, that we asked three very specific additional questions in the mailer. We asked, "What do you think the city's strengths are?", "What do you think its challenges are?", and "What do you want for Folsom in the next five years?" I'm here to tell you that we have more work to do to really compress that into an aggregated summary, but this can be very helpful in your ongoing strategic planning work. And so, candidly, I think the statement I would make is, I've never seen such full, robust response. And so, you are the one we talk about when we go around the state now, that when people talk about doing this kind of work in their communities, we say, "Well, normally, we see about one to two percent, maybe." Folsom weighed in, clocked in at sixteen point five percent, nearly five thousand responses, twelve hundred comments. And that tells me that your community really cares.
They care, and everyone has an opinion.
They care, and everyone has an opinion. Yeah, that would capture it. But I think that's good news. That's good news in a democracy where people get to shape the future. And so, hopefully, you're pleased to see that both a voter component has been part of this effort and a broad invitation to all residents and all voices to weigh in as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bonnie. So, yeah, we'll pause here as well before we talk more about the aggregate of everything, if you have specific questions for Bonnie.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't know if mine is more for Bonnie or for city staff, but first a comment, I just want to make sure that both of these PowerPoint presentations are attached to the agenda, because they weren't before this, but so a member of the public wants to go and watch this PowerPoint presentation?
They will be posted, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then, I personally would like to be able to see all twelve hundred comments. So, I don't know if that means that I have to sit down and watch the hard copy?
We can get you that.
We can do that. We have a spreadsheet of everything.
Perfect, thank you.
And it's very instructive to review that because you really, you see the spectrum. It's really not any one thing, but you see everything from, "Thanks for asking. I really appreciate being asked", to "Please don't do this", or "Zig over here" or "Zag over there". You see it. You will see all of it.
Yeah, I was going to add, I don't need that packaged for me. I'll just take the comments as they are. Our agenda packet is well more than that number of comments for most meetings, so we do a lot of reading as it is.
Yeah. No, my comment is just to see the parks and rec. I was hoping to get the bigger number, just out of curiosity. All trails are great, and the parks are right, so people are enjoying, especially recent COVID. Parks and rec, the parks gave their life, to be honest, right?
Yeah, high comments on the parks and trails.
You do have it? Okay, so maybe the number may be a little medium, but more comments. I love it. That's good. Looking forward to read those. On slide number eight, I know you said it, Folsom is, you know, right? Anything else you can think of? I know Folsom is great in getting the responses and everything, and your reach, and all those. Are there any other things you can think of to get the little bit more responses?
YK, we got fifteen times more than any other city ever does. That's kind of amazing.
It is amazing. I'm with the mayor on that. It is amazing to see this level of response with a simple mailer and some digital online reminders. So, what we really are interested in now is going deeper and looking at this feedback as it relates to your strategic planning process.
And just to confirm, all of the mailers that went out went to a household. When they came back, was it tied to an address or tied to an actual resident of Folsom?
They were sent to resident.
Yeah, all of the mailers were sent to Folsom residents, Folsom households. And the feedback came in either online or people could tear off the response card and send that in. Either way, we see both responses where people give names and where they don't.
So, the information that came back isn't validated that it's an actual Folsom resident?
They were only mailed to Folsom addresses.
They could fill it in, you know, they're asked, you can see on the survey, they were asked to fill in their name, address, and city, but, you know, we obviously couldn't require it. And we shouldn't consider this a statistically valid survey. This was just responding to feedback I heard on the dais of, "Let's ask as many people as we can. Let's not just do one little poll."
You're not suggesting survey fraud, are you?
I'm always just curious, was it, was it actually, did people have to send back? Did they provide information?
Yeah, they were asked to fill in their address.
Yeah, I think what we typically see is, and it's really important to remember, this is the anecdotal compliment to the survey, to the statistically accurate survey that Godby does. And rarely, if ever, I cannot remember the last time where the feedback coming in was dramatically different than the survey that you saw with reliable research methodology behind it. So, I want to be clear, I love what I do, but this is the anecdotal compliment.
And I also, you know, I do want to underscore a comment that Bonnie made is that a lot of Bonnie's clients choose to only mail to registered voters. And we, I specifically asked that we mail to everyone because that's what our residents are used to. And Bonnie was very nice to accommodate that, so we really wanted to be sure we were reaching as many people as possible.
Yeah, so to your point, your city manager took that step to say, "Every household", which we do not see as a regular course of this process.
As it turns out, though, it was reflective of the results that were of the registered voters, and we happen to have an extraordinarily high percentage of registered active voters in Folsom relative to the number of residents. It's a tremendous number that are regular active voters.
And I know many communities throughout the state would love to get these kinds of results and don't, so you really do have a very special community here, the fact that we saw this kind of response rate.
Yeah.
Any questions of Bonnie?
The reason why I was asking that, you know, because you have been in this business thirty-five years or twenty-three years, you know, thirty-five years, right? Eighty thousand people living in this town, of course, there are kids and all those. Almost forty-five to forty-eight thousand voters are there. We got the ten percent response, right? So, I know it may be a great number based on your research. What I was thinking is anything else, right, you know, human touch, maybe a city tent in front of the Target or Walmart with the volunteer organizations could have helped. But I'm just thinking out loud here.
Yeah, I would just say, the one piece that comes up is that we used a lot of tools, but there are other tools in our toolbox, so to speak, that can be used, that are often used, quite frankly, in the election window as well. Conversations with real people makes a big difference, whether they're opinion leaders or neighborhood folks or voters. But taking the time to really engage with people makes a lot of...
And just to make a clarification, so, because YK, you mentioned voters, but it went to households, which cuts down that number, right? Is that correct? So, how many households are there in Folsom?
A little over twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty thousand, okay.
Almost twenty-nine thousand households, all residents.
And YK, one other important thing, because I've seen this happen many times over the years, you need to understand that probably only half of the people that shop at Walmart live here.
Well, that's okay. I'm just looking for the human touch and opportunity to get one more response. That's all I'm saying.
I would concur with the mayor that we, of all the tools in our toolkit, we rarely do the tabling, or recommend tabling at a store because we do see the issue of lots of other folks who aren't from the community might be walking in and out and then sort of contaminating what we're talking about. So, but I do think within the window that we did this work, phenomenal results. That's what you can leave with and feel good about.
Bonnie, can I just get clarification? How many responses?
The total responses was forty-seven seventy-three in terms of completed surveys, whether online or returned through the response card. Four-seven-seven-three was the total response. And the number of comments where somebody actually wrote down something that we need to take in was twelve-hundred-nine.
That's good. Thank you, ma'am.
I did hear one somewhat funny comment from one of my neighbors. He filled out the hard copy survey, put it in the mail. It was returned to him as undeliverable. And I said, "Well, if you still have it, I'm happy to take it and turn it in for you", but he just threw it away. So, I, and I said, "Well, you know, obviously, that's not the City of Folsom's problem", but I don't know what happened there with the U.S. Postal Service, but I don't know how it was undeliverable.
I'll talk to you offline about my experience with the post office in the last year.
Bonnie commented to me at some point as we were finalizing this, you know, she said, "You'll be able to walk into council and just drop this, you know, huge volume of surveys." And I thought, "No way, you know, people aren't going to like fill out this little card", and literally within days, hundreds of the hard copies were coming into City Hall. I mean, people were hand-delivering them. It was such a zeal. It was really nice.
And I didn't fill mine out because I didn't want to tip the balance.
Well, yeah.
The other piece that happens is, and I know we don't have them here tonight, but I'm excited that some of you actually want to read through the twelve hundred comments because what we see generally from the folks in your position is you'll be looking through them and go, "I know them, I know them, I know them, I know her, I know him." So, you're very connected in the community. And what we see here, although the volume is much bigger in Folsom than we see elsewhere, I still predict that as you see those, you're going to know people who weighed in. And the only reason they weighed in was because they got the mailer with a clear invite to say, "Please weigh in", and they got, they may have gotten the digital, the newsletter, or the e-blast saying, "Please, we really want to hear from you."
Right, right. You know, Bonnie, just in conclusion, though, I'm very happy with the numbers. I always look for what is that one or two things probably could have brought. It's always a curious mind. That's why I was asking that question, not in any disrespect, you know.
Continuous improvement. I'm totally with you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions specifically of Bonnie?
No.
Okay, so, thank you to both of our consultants, to Brian and Bonnie, and they'll remain, you know, here throughout this item. But with that, I'd really like to just turn it back over to the council for any comments, questions, or direction that the council wishes to provide in terms of next steps. That would be very helpful to us as staff.
My only comment is going to be that I think we need to schedule a discussion about what we want to do about the sales tax measure. We need to get this resolved once and for all. We're either going to do it or we're not.
Yeah, I think we need to take a look at language for a sales tax measure at our next meeting, if possible, because there's compelling reasons to consider it. And it's important that, you know, to Bonnie's point, we invited the residents to weigh in on something. Nothing is more important than asking them to weigh in on this particular instance because we've got, as we have talked about over and over again this year, as we develop the budget, we have a deficit forming, and it is going to affect our ability to attract and maintain the quality of our public safety departments, attract quality officers and firefighters and other staff to those departments over time. And the hallmark of this council over many, many, many... And the hallmark of this council over many, many, many years has been being very thoughtful and forward-looking. And we can solve that problem by cutting services or we can solve that problem with the help of our residents by trying to enhance our revenue. So I think it's really important that we take action right away because the sooner we do that, the more runway we will have to make that case.
We're already pretty far behind the eight ball in my personal opinion. So we need to, we need to have a discussion about it.
Well, I think we're here to have that discussion right now, honestly.
It wasn't agendized.
Okay, that's why I said I'd like to see language at the next city council meeting.
I missed you. I thought you said I'd like to have that conversation right now.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking that we have that discussion at the next available city council meeting so that we can make a decision about doing this or not doing this.
I'm with Mike on this.
Okay, Vice Mayor Rodriguez, Councilmember Chalantela, Councilmember Aquino.
No, I support, you know, maybe more formal rather than.
We have to have a discussion.
I would definitely support getting the agenda for discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with having a discussion, but I, I think if the city is going to pursue a sales tax measure, we only have one bite at the apple. If it does, you know, the city tried in 2018 and it failed by a substantial margin. In my opinion, you know, and I'm, I'm not a political scientist, but in my opinion, you have one shot. And if it doesn't pass, you can't go back to the voters again for decades. And so I would think you put it, if we're going to do it, you put it on when it's going to have the best chance of passing. And that's in a presidential election, not in a non-presidential election.
And I'm happy to have that conversation at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I heard consensus from all of you that we'll bring back ballot language to your July twelfth agenda. And I do want to point out that to get a ballot measure placed on the ballot by the city council, it demands a super majority vote of the council. So we have to have at least four of you who are supportive of that ballot language moving forward or it is dead in the water, so to speak. So we will be back before you July twelfth. And I think what we'll do is provide ballot language for both a half cent and a full cent. And we can have a more in-depth conversation at that time. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do we have anybody that would like to pull anything? I'd actually, I'd like to pull six.
I have Brightview Landscaping, number four.
Number four.
I'll move the consent calendar absent items four and six.
One second.
We have motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalantela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. YK, questions, comments about four?
If I could ask Lorraine and perhaps Zach to come on up in case you can help with questions?
Right. Right now, I think after negotiation, Lorraine, you sent a nice Excel spreadsheet. The future contracted amount for those, all L and Ls are going to be one point nine eight million dollars.
Correct.
Right? Not the one we are there as a price, like two point nine nine million dollars.
Correct, one point nine.
One point nine.
Needs some change, yeah.
Good. So, and the other point I have, which I think I brought last time also in the budget timing, in addition to that one point nine nine, we are giving them another four hundred and thirty thousand dollars separate contract for all additional activities like tree planting or, and I'm just reading what has been written. Likewise, I think you may have, you know, ten or so miscellaneous items. So my point is on that one, I sincerely want to reconsider that one knowing Bonnie was talking about, you know, the outstanding involvement of the community. I, I know at least in the last few months, we had two volunteering activities and they're all full. And we planted about forty trees in Briggs Ranch. And before the Trails Day, they were doing so many. Even we closed the volunteering registration for Trails Day because it is overwhelming. So my request is, you know, by looking at that four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it's going to be ongoing. It's not one year. Every year we have to spend one way or another, either it is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars or more. Considering some of those can be handled by a volunteer organizations. This, I don't want to call again Mike this time, but it is a community service day. And how do we do it in a mini way? Because most of the projects for community service day is coming from Parks and Rec, offering some savings here, hiring a volunteer coordinator. That's where my long story coming to the end. Taking a deep look into that and see whether it can be a wise move, cutting some of those services they are providing from that four hundred and thirty thousand, hiring a volunteer coordinator and get it done from that and use that volunteer coordinator for many other things.
YK, are you making a motion to do something other than approve this?
Yeah, I'm just giving whether we have to approve it or, you know, just discuss. That's what I'm opening up to my colleagues as well.
Okay, well, either make a motion or I'm going to make a motion.
Could I ask a question first, please? Lorraine, did, did this item go to the Landscape and Lighting Commission before it came to us?
As an advisory committee, they are aware of the process we're in, but they're not a discretionary body that approves these contracts or looks at them like this, yeah.
I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be beneficial for us to send this to the Landscape and Lighting Commission first because, you know, you're talking about reducing the scope of services. And the one landscape and lighting director that I spoke with, and I realize not every L and L has a representative at the moment, but the one that I spoke with said, you know, he had no knowledge of this. And he already has concerns about the level of service and the look of some of the landscaping and things that are not being taken care of. So I just feel like maybe if they have the opportunity to weigh in and say, okay, if we're going to talk about reducing the scope of services, you know, let's make sure they're on board with. I mean, I don't know exactly, I can see the dollar amounts, but I don't know exactly what's being cut. And even if you told me, you know, I'm not necessarily familiar with all of these districts. So I would just be inclined to let the L and L weigh in on this before. I mean, we're on a month-to-month contract with our current folks.
Well, they're, they're in life to challenge a bit. Maybe, Lorraine, you could explain that.
So TerraCare is currently our contractor. They are not willing to go on a month-to-month under the current rate. The rate that they would be willing to go under month-to-month is the one that they provided in the proposal, which was two point nine million dollars or two point eight a year. So they are not willing to go month-to-month under that prior rate because it is indeed an under-budgeted service contract. So that's an answer to that.
So past June thirtieth is really what they're.
And so we really, you know, and when we brought this a couple of weeks ago, and again, maybe the timing wasn't super perfect because it was pretty much right near the end here when that contract was expiring and we needed, and we needed to move on with the new contract. We would be without service probably for a good month or month and a half. The L and L recesses in July and August, so they would not be seeing this till September. And I know Zach is very, you know, he does take the time to go through each of the budgets. A lot of this has culminated within the last month. So not really giving us an opportunity to, to bring them up to speed on some of the negotiation processes that we went through in the last two to four weeks. And really, we've been fierce, you know, fierce defenders of our public dollar. So we've done whatever we can to stretch those dollars for decades. Out of the twenty-nine L and Ls we have, only six we've been able to get through. There are only six we've brought forward for the Prop two eighteen process and have been successful in rightsizing those rates. The rest of the twenty-three districts are operating on funds that are very, that were developed twenty, twenty-five years ago. So the trajectory of expenses and revenue has really begun to spread and more so recently with all the same pressures, the same inflation pressures that we're all experiencing with goods and services now. So the longer we wait, I don't think we're going to get any different answers and respectfully understand the communication with the L and L district. And Zach will definitely take this back with them. But the reduction in services is not severe. We are bound by the formation documents of those, each of those L and Ls to provide services that take care of their plants, their trees, their walls, their fences.
And there's nothing in any of those documentations that say they will be done by volunteers.
Correct.
But we have to assume there is going to be some, I don't know, I mean, some result, some repercussion, something because we're going to have a reduction in services, right? There's going to be weeds that aren't cut or there's going to be something.
And we can explain.
And if there isn't, well, then why didn't we do that before, right? So.
There, the, the way we sliced off the million dollars, and we did this because the preliminary engineer's report, which you've already approved, we had estimated, we had estimated budgets for the scheduled and unscheduled, which is the four hundred and thirty, and I can expand on that if you'd like. But we had already estimated, we had already kind of dialed up the baseline costs from TerraCare because we knew, or we said, this is not doable, given what your, your current contract rate is. We have, you know, a hundred and, I think fifty or eighty acres of shrubs and about twenty-one acres of turf and then just, you know, eleven thousand trees that we've inventoried so far out of seventy-five percent of our district. So there's, oops, sorry, thousands of trees, lots of irrigation, five hundred or so irrigation controllers.
And Lorraine, these guys work, what, five days a week, fifty, fifty weeks a year?
Yes.
They're professional landscape.
They don't, they don't take time off. So anyway, it's just the, the, the amount of money that we had budgeted in the engineer's report was a little bit more than TerraCare's baseline, just trying to read the tea leaves. And we got the proposals and hence saw the larger costs, which are the reality of today. Of the four, three were very close, within a hundred or so thousand of each other. When we went through the interview process, Brightview definitely prevailed in terms of their performance and their experience with municipal sort of contracts. So they got the most points on that. And then their prices, when we started to negotiate, to the best of our ability. So what the reductions will include is instead of, instead of pruning on a regular basis, so you, you see them sharing and pruning, we're going to reduce it down to two, two times a year. See how that works and monitor that. Fertilization, instead of four times a year, it's two times a year. Pre-emergent, instead of four times a year, two times a year. Is it ideal and is it the best thing to do based on keeping the health and wellness of these trees and plants, which are your biggest assets in your L and Ls, right? You drive down your streets, you see the trees, you see the shrubs and you comment on their, and their, on their wellbeing and how they look and make the neighborhoods look. So we will monitor that. How we've scaled it down is probably not the right place to be, but because of kind of that rock and a hard place of preliminary engineer's report's already been done, your report that you have tonight is to allocate a little bit more money where we could grab it from fund balances in the engineers in each of the L and Ls that had the capacity to do that. And so Zach will be careful to kind of script out. The reductions are going to be across the board, but he will be able to script out to the contractor exactly what those reductions will look like and how we'll, and then we'll monitor those to see if we can sustain it. Maybe that is the new right thing to do, but right now it wasn't part of our maintenance spec.
Will there be flexibility in the contract? So let's say you say, okay, we want you to go down to pre-emergent twice a year or whatever. And it's not working. So we say, okay, we need to go back up to four, but we're, that means we're either going to have to pay more money or we're going to have to cut something somewhere else.
Yes.
So will there be the flexibility to do that?
Absolutely. In fact, that's where the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars comes from. So, and that generally, in healthy budget years, you would generally schedule on your unscheduled a very similar number or close to about fifty percent of your unscheduled. And what that means is scheduled, which is the one point nine, is mow and blow, basic tree maintenance, basic plant maintenance. What your unscheduled is for is trees fall, trees die, stakes need to be replaced, stakes need to be added, controllers need to be fixed, controllers need to be replaced, backflows need to be fixed, backflows need to be replaced. Not really volunteer work. There's probably little things that we could do because we've already scaled back the contract on the scheduled and the unscheduled to try to meet this year's budget needs.
And Lorraine, I can recall many instances when we've had people that lived in a neighborhood that decided that they were going to take over the L and L district and it's turned into nothing but a disaster. So I'm not in favor of using volunteers for this at all.
There might be things that we could carve out in the future. I wouldn't do, you know, that, that approach at this point would be, you know, something that we could look at over the next six months. Maybe, you know, emptying the, the pet stations, replacing the bags. I mean, that does take a staff person time to go on the, on the trails to do that. In the L and Ls, though, that is not where all the trails exist. It's in the parks contract, but we have about twelve miles of trails in the L and Ls, so.
YK, did you want to make a motion on this?
My, one more question is, when Brighton View did excellent on the interview, did we do the reference checks for all four by chance? I know I can speak, I'm the great, I'm the, you know, the perfect guy in this world, but somebody has to tell me or tell you that he's the perfect guy. Did we do the reference checks?
We did for Brightview and since, considering they were the number one as far as how we ranked, we chose to move forward with them. And so the others, we didn't engage because, you know, they were deemed the most qualified. And so that's typically where you start a negotiation is with the most qualified and then you would work from there.
Okay. I would do all four. I mean, to be honest with you because there is a almost half or less of the cost guide, there is one more. And you guys talked to that person about the scope and all those. So anyway, I think it, there is a room for bringing some volunteer efforts. I think I rather want Parks and Rec Commission to be taking it. I'm with Sarah. Rather going with this, maybe we can do a one-year and additional increments. And this one year, let the L and L to be deeply involved with the services we have cut, revisit it and extend. That's an option as well. That will give you a time rather than just contracting for three years plus two years extension. That's what it is. That's number one. And number two, it'll give an opportunity to other parties to see it.
Is that a motion, YK?
It is a motion, yeah.
But either, either party can terminate the agreement, right? You don't have to go through the end of the contract.
Right.
Yeah.
And also in that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, so it's a one-year. That way it can go back to the L and L. You are more than happy to, you know, help me because if there is a painful that is, I, I'm open to listen in. And also detailing the line items on the cost wise, that way it helps in the future. If we want to take out, you know, one or two, then at least we know exactly. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and two hundred thousand dollars.
Lorraine, is there a one-year option? I just want to be clear here.
Well, there could be a one-year option, but here's, here's the craziness of this is it covers, our L and Ls cover about seventy percent of our city. It takes a contractor about a year to learn our city. So we are going to be mirroring them as they go through. And Zach and his team and the inspection team, they have organized drives. We're going to go to these five districts today. And honestly, I mean, I've, I've, I was in the L and Ls for nineteen years and, and obviously still have my hands in it, so it's twenty-one years. It takes a good one to four years to really understand. That corner's HOA, that's L and L. That wall's HOA, that's ours. That one's not ours, that's private. It takes a long time. So a one-year contract would probably not serve anybody real well because they're not going to roll up their sleeves knowing, hey, once we get past this one-year, you know, understand window, then we have, we have the possibility of not getting this again or they're going to go out to bid. So I would not recommend that. I think it's, you know, it takes a lot of time to put these proposals together and manage them. And I think if we just had that opportunity, we've been working with Brightview down in the Folsom Plan area. They've been hired by many other of the private side and we have had really good experience with them, so.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Just in, in that same vein, do contracts like this typically have a termination for convenience clause?
They do. Our standard.
For both sides?
For both sides, yes. Our standard contract for services like this includes a thirty-day written notice termination clause.
If they're doing a really bad job, we can get rid of them.
Well, no, I know.
And for no fault. It's a no, no fault termination clause. And I wanted to also build on Elaine's question. With respect to public contracting, the RFP, I just confirmed with Zach, the RFP that went out to all of the proposers included a three-year scope. So if we were to reduce the scope, we would argue to one year, we would arguably. to reduce the scope, we would argue to one year, we would arguably have to go back out and let all of the proposers say, I was planning on whatever this amount is for three years of business. And if I only am guaranteed one year of business, my number might change.
I just have a quick question too. So if this were to go back to L and L, what is the, what is the expected outcome? I don't get it.
A three-year contract?
No, beyond that, I think Sarah and they were mentioning, we have negotiations on the services, what services we are cutting, we are reducing, you know, taking input, who are the directors we have appointed as a L and L for each area, taking inputs from them. That's how that...
Y K, I did wanna add one thing. Just because we are in a state of development in Folsom, we'll probably be back with the same contract within a year to do an amendment for new areas that are being incorporated south of 50. So if we do an amendment to incorporate new areas, it's also an opportunity to modify the contract based on conversations we have with the L and L committee or feedback from anyone else. So it's not to say that, you know, we finished this tonight and we don't have this discussion again for three years. It's more so, you know, keeping us rolling and then also, you know, we can revisit and amend probably before the end of the year as we incorporate new areas south of 50.
Thank you for that creativity. I'm probably taking my motion back.
Okay. Well, then that...
Yeah, I mean, I got an option. We can talk.
I just had a question, but if he's taking his motion back, then I'm good.
So I'm gonna support this. I mean, we're up against a clock. I don't think they really have a choice.
You're gonna support the consent item?
I'm gonna support the consent item, but I do wanna make a comment. I would like to have this go to the L and L 4A discussion, just in terms of what you guys are recommending, that, you know, the reduction of scope so that they can weigh in, so that they can, number one, be informed because they are the closest people to their neighbors. They're the people the neighbors are gonna turn to when they have a question. But secondly, I don't wanna dismiss Y K's suggestion. Certainly, things that happen weekly, monthly, whatever, that cannot be done by volunteers. It has to be done by paid staff. But, you know, taking a look at whether it's spreading bark or things that we typically do at Community Service Day, I mean, I don't, I mean, I know I've spread bark for the schools. I presume we've done it for the parks or the L and Ls, but just making sure that some of those types of things are included as Community Service Day projects. But with that, I will move adoption of whatever this resolution number is.
Resolution 10-873, second.
Item four. We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes, and I just wanna thank former Mayor Miklos for the donation of the furniture in item six. I did that once myself. It was a really good way to get rid of very heavy and bulky office furniture. Creative, creative way to do that, Steve. So other than that, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Okay, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning July 1st, all residents will be required to recycle their food waste to comply with SB 1383, a state law designed to reduce emissions of climate pollutants. To help residents prepare for the city's new green bin program, the City of Folsom Recycling Team will host special events, pick up a free kitchen countertop pail, ask questions and learn more about the city's efforts to get food waste in its place. There's a drive-through pail pickup Wednesday, June 29th, that's tomorrow, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at Lemby Park near the soccer fields. And there's a pail pickup, wait, I have a hard time saying that, at the Folsom Public Library, Tuesday, July 5th through Saturday, July 9th, 11:00 to 4:00 PM. Sharing the camaraderie as Folsom's neighborhoods partner with the Folsom Police and Fire Departments for the annual National Night Out. Each year, Folsom's police officers, firefighters, city officials and hundreds of residents attend dozens of National Night of Out events throughout the city. Neighborhoods hosting celebrations are encouraged to register their event by July 14th at folsom.ca.us/polic. The Citizens Academy is an educational program designed to create a greater understanding and trust between public safety agencies and Folsom residents. It is also a required training program for their CAPS, the Citizens Assisting Public Safety Volunteer Program. The 12-week Citizen Academy will be held in person from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on Wednesdays, August 10th through October 12th, and applications are available on the Police Department's website. And then finally, the City of Folsom is now enforcing stricter penalties for illegal fireworks usage. The Folsom City Council adopted a social host ordinance that levies $1,000 fines against property owners that either use or allow the use of illegal fireworks on their property. Calls for service increased dramatically on July 4th and emergency response resources are stretched extremely thin. During the holiday weekend, use 911 for emergencies only, like an active fire, injury or an immediate threat to people or property. If you see or suspect illegal firework usage, please call the Folsom Police Department at 461-6400. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Sarah.
Yeah, two things. I have mentioned a couple of times in talking with Mark Rockman, my desire to have roundabouts be the preferred traffic calming measure in this city. And so he offered to set up a little field trip. And so Mark and Brian from Public Works and Y K and Elaine and I made a little field trip last week to Rockland and Lincoln, and we were met by their Public Works staff, some traffic engineers from Kimley Horn, and then also Councilmember Paul Joyner from the City of Lincoln. And, you know, I think, I imagine when we read a lot of those 1,200 comments, they're gonna talk about, you know, the things that we commonly hear. People wanna see more traffic enforcement. They want, you know, people not to run red lights, not to run stop signs. They don't like any sort of traffic congestion. And I really think roundabouts are the answer. And the City of Rockland, in this particular roundabout that we were at, mentioned that on that street, the average speed went from 46 miles per hour down to 39, I believe. And they said that now, you know, when they see a collision in a roundabout, it's more of a fender bender or somebody rear ends somebody. It's not something where, most of the time you're calling for a tow truck, you're not calling for an ambulance. And so they've seen a reduction in, you know, very serious collisions or fatal collisions. So what I would ask, you know, if there's some support, just initial support from my colleagues, is that we ask Public Works to come back and maybe talk about the feasibility of, as we build out south of 50, you know, putting some roundabouts in places where maybe traffic signals were originally planned and then also identifying some intersections north of 50 where the intersection could be retrofitted with a roundabout, maybe at someplace where the level of service is DRF or we have, you know, we've had several, you know, fatal accidents or something like that.
We have dramatic speed issues on certain numbers of our roads and I would fully encourage you to keep going on the roundabouts. It's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
I took a tour. I took a, I was driving around south of 50 and they have roundabouts in several of those areas.
A couple of them, New Home Company area, yeah.
Yeah.
The other option, I just kinda wanna throw this out there. First of all, I believe in making it as easy as possible for people to participate in the government, you know, governing process. But we have had several snafus now with people calling in where a meeting has had to be canceled or we've had to redo the entire agenda because of technical difficulties. And they just had one last week or the week before at the Historic District Commission. And I'm kind of wondering if we've, if we've gotten to the point where it's more of a hindrance than a help and maybe we should go back to the way that we did it for, you know, however many years and just say, you can participate in public, you can send an email ahead of time to the city clerk and the members of the council or the commissions or whatever will receive that, those comments. But I'm just, I think we ought to have a discussion about when it's time to phase out some of the options that were brought in because of the pandemic. And again, I don't wanna make it difficult for people, but it just seems like we've had too many of these technological snafus where we then have to cancel or reschedule or redo the whole entire meeting. And I think it's maybe more of a hassle than it's worth at this point.
I'd be curious to know.
I had that conversation with Elaine and where we came to, because I was, as you, as I think you know, because I responded to a text or an email from you, I was pretty much in the same place. But I've been assured that will not be happening at the council meetings because we have Krista. So I don't know what they're gonna do at those other meetings, but I'm, otherwise, if there's another snafu at another meeting that doesn't have the benefit of having Krista there, then I'm done too. So.
I would be curious to know the number of people that engage through technology. I'm a big, I'm a supporter that we have the ability. I think it's been human error that's been causing some of these issues. And so I would like to look at numbers. I think technology is great. I think it engages people. But I think the numbers really should be telling. If it's a few people, then, but if it's quite a few people, then I think we should continue continuous improvement.
Okay, Sarah, was that all you had? Mike?
Three quick things. Looking forward to seeing the results of our, the collected results from our parking pilot project down in the Historic District. Mark assured me that we'd see something on that coming up soon. It seems to have done the trick in terms of encouraging people to park where they're supposed to and not where they're not supposed to. Wanna thank the FHDA and everybody that helped make the parade a huge success on Saturday. That is one of the most fun things that we do here in Folsom. It was really, really a blast. And then I just wanna be the one that invites everybody to get their western wear from one of our oldest businesses in Folsom, Handley's Western Wear on East Bidwell, because Friday, Saturday and Sunday is the Folsom Pro Rodeo. So come on down.
And the tickets are nearly gone, so if you're thinking about going, you're not gonna get them at the gate. So.
Yes.
Call, call the chamber and get them.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm going to tag along with Mike what he said about the hometown parade. It's awesome. It's wonderful. It is drawing more people. It's just a thought and request to my council, you know, consider whether we can bring those organizers who put together so much work, at least to recognize them at the city hall. Just think about it, if it is a wise thing, because it is now gearing up and it is going around the greater Sacramento area, right? And roundabouts, yep, I'm for it in the sense, it is a visual thing where we were staying almost 20 to 30 minutes each intersection, cars are coming down. Speeding is one of my pet peeves and I think even at my first meeting, I said, what can we do to reduce the speed limits in our town?
We can have a conversation about this, but we can't debate the subject of roundabouts or anything because it's not on the agenda tonight. So.
This is my...
I think he's just commenting.
I'm commenting because I'm one of the persons who joined Sarah Aquino.
No, it's just that now we've had three of you make comments about it. So I just request that we move on. The city attorney's looking at me and giving me a face.
Is that right, ma'am? I joined her and I'm making my council comments, that's all, right? I'm not asking for any nods here and there, right? I'm all for it as a personally a council member because it is helping in a big way for the speed limits and safety, public safety is another big one as well. And again, I think I was mentioning to Mayor, I think in November, Cal Cities has a yearly conference in Orange County. So I'm heading there. I'm trying to research, you know, as much as I can and bring the best of the breed from 483 cities, anything we can implement in our town. So I'm gearing on that one. And thanks to Elaine for that 100 degrees hot weather and the cooling stations, cooling stations, not 100 degrees hot weather. I see it.
Thank you very much to our library team and our CERT volunteers.
Right, right. It's awesome. And rodeo is here, you know, encourage, you know, join us. And that's all from my side. Thank you and good evening, Folsom.
Well, I will echo the same. FHDA, it was a very vibrant parade. There was a lot of activities. Some of these entries are just so amazing. So if you don't, if you didn't attend it, you'll wanna attend it in the next few years. And also, yeah, this weekend, Rodeo Up. Saturday's sold out, Friday and Sunday are, there are still some tickets available. So everyone have a good time.
Okay, my usual, do we know what the result of that major accident was at Blue Ravine and Oak Avenue today?
I don't have any additional updates. I'm sure they're still investigating right now.
Seriously bad accident.
Very, very serious accident, very concerning.
Hit and run. So the red light applies to you, speed limit applies to you, stop sign applies to you, and don't jump on top of anything because you never know who the next idiot is that doesn't know that the stop sign or the red light or the speed limit applies to them. Please drive carefully. Please be very, very, very careful with any fireworks that you have. Make sure you have hoses and buckets available. And please, 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 if you're out in the street in front of your house or wherever you are, please clean up your mess and make sure that it is put away in a water bath overnight before you throw it in the trash the next day.
And keep pets inside.
Yes. Keep your pets inside and please keep your fireworks away from my house so it doesn't upset any of the pets at my house. With that, I will say good night, Cowboy Up, and we'll see you at the rodeo this weekend.